Hi. Okay. Got your gun?
Hey, I don't have it with me, but I can make arrangements for that.
He's not ready yet, folks.
Not ready yet.
We're ready, but he's not. Sit down. Relax. Look. I didn't show you guys, look.
Look at the last one with a laptop.
No, look at, look at. See who I got? Brianna.
Oh, perfect.
That sweater I made her.
Look at her posing. What a handful.
This is just something special. Twenty-two dollars.
And I have the E.L.A. I feel must be seeing the day.
Over at top office, man. I said my son, you can give me a picture of my kids. I put my kids in there. That's right. Who do I got? I got this. Got her. It's okay. Nobody else.
Yeah. Alp attendant position or? He only works on Mercedes. He only works on Mercedes.
Glasses. You have hair in here.
Or she was.
Oh, boy, that was.
The only one out there, one definitely. You need somebody to check it out?
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a burning justice for all.
Okay, here we go.
Good evening. I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for Conchetta Barber Gallo Catalano, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District.
President, could I say something?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I am saddened tonight because of the loss of a great employee of the school district, Conchetta Catalano. Conchetta was a mentor to me when I first started teaching. She was a fourth grade teacher at Roxborough Road Elementary School. We have many of their staff here. She retired in 1999, but Conchetta lived her life in Mattydale. She went to church in Mattydale and she taught in Mattydale, which is very unusual for a staff member. She was an innovator, and I've been talking to Mrs. De Bianco, and we went back into our files, and this is a book that Conchetta and her class produced back in 1989 of the history of a great community in our school district, the Mattydale Community. I'll share this with the board afterwards, but she loved her community so much, and she will be dearly lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. It's always nice when we have board members or people that know, fortunately, the deceased members of our community, because it helps to make a connection. Thanks, Bob. Our first item is our good news. Dr. Dice?
We would want to congratulate Shirley Ware for coaching the team. She did a really great job.
And Danielle Philps.
Okay.
I hope that, I hope that you, if you can't hear me, I hope you can hear me now. I apologize. And then last but not least, in recognition of the 2012 Roger Cypher Teacher Award, we'd like to acknowledge Shannon Brison. Bryson.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is our North Syracuse Education Foundation Teachers' Grant. Welcome. Sure can.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Lidka, and I'm the president of the North Syracuse Education Foundation. The foundation serves a simple but comprehensive purpose, to ensure that students in the North Syracuse School District have the benefit of equality, quality education, to maintain and enhance the level of excellence in the North Syracuse schools, and to respond to the realities of diminishing local and federal funding. The North Syracuse Education Foundation secures resources to support quality education through innovative programs, creative opportunities, and a manageative approaches. These programs enrich the curriculum, inspire students and staff, and expand the community's involvement in public education. Before we get started with the awards, I'd like to introduce Nat Gordway, board member and former president. Where's that? There's that. Caroling Gross, the treasurer. Bob Crabtree, he's a board member. Jackie Forte, who's a board member. Okay. And the people that I call up, I have awards for them, if they could come up and get them. And not everybody may be here, but I'm going to call off everybody's name and announce what they won the award for. Amy Ferletti and Amy Owens for the high school math ambassador. All right. Kathleen Erlich for, let's see, she had two of them, drawing from life and studio series. Is she here? Now, somebody that I know is here. Becky Hall for Star Spangled Singers. Nervous. The shirt was part of the grant that she requested, and that's going to be used for modeling. Exactly. Modeling. Okay. Fina Santangelo and Colleen Wickert for Speed Stacking for All. Okay. John, is it Nadler and Luke Morris? Can you hear me now? That is really. Oh, it's there, it is. Okay. Joanne Mrothick and Glenda House for eBooks, e-readers, e-leaders. Let's see here. Then we've got Cheryl Garofano. Garofano, sorry. Students Pitcher Their Futures. And the last one is Judith Brennan Culinary Workforce Preparation. Okay. For everybody that won an award, we're going to take pictures outside, and you guys can move on with your program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Ron, I just wanted to say that the organization was started in 2000 when Dr. Melvin retired the first time, and we felt as a tribute to him, we would start this organization. And over the last 12 years, not only through your leadership, but the leadership of those before you, you've done a tremendous, tremendous job to help students and teachers with the money and the grants that you give each year, and you've done a wonderful job, and we really thank you so much. Before I read this next proclamation, I just feel that I have to say that, you know, in a time when the budgetary constraints are tugging at all of our arms and legs and ears and throats and noses and everything, you know, it's ever so important for me, as a representative of the board here, to tell you that, you know, it may not seem as though we are as appreciative as the words on this page say, that we are, because of, simply because of the cuts that we have to make, some drastic cuts that we've had to make over the course of the last three to five years. I can tell you, and I believe that I speak for my fellow board members, all eight of them, when I say, I can't look at the lists when we're forced to make cuts because of the people that are on them, many of whom we all know in some form or another, either in our neighborhoods or from our prior lives as students and college students and residents of the community, and it just really, really hurts us deeply to have to make cuts. And I really want you to know that we really do appreciate everything that you do. To cut one of you is something that just breaks each one of our hearts, and it's not easy for us to do. Maybe someday we'll get to the point where schools will be funded fairly across the state with state aid, and even though we'll have our challenges each year, we won't be faced with the fact that we have to cut millions and millions of dollars out of our budget, because there's only three things we can do. We can cut jobs, we can cut programs, and we can use fund balance. Once there's no more jobs to cut, because without teachers, without teacher's aides, without bus drivers, without custodians, we can't do the business of the school district. You can't cut programs. I mean, you can cut all the ones that aren't mandated, but what does that leave you with? English, math, social studies, and science. I mean, you know, all those wonderful electives and all the musical, and the sports, all the things we've talked about over the last two or three months, and when you have no more fund balance, when you use it all, then there's nothing to cut. So I want to tell you that we truly, truly appreciate everything that you do for us, and it pains us that your ranks aren't as large as they were last year. With that, throughout history, teaching assistants and teacher aides have had an impact on the district's students and community, a work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This is an awesome responsibility that is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. Teaching assistants and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber, who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the teaching assistants and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Pat Carbone, president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest, deepest gratitude, and hereby declare May 8, 2012, as Teaching Assistant Appreciation Day, and May 15, 2012, as Teacher Aid Appreciation Day. Tony, all in favor? That's unanimous. And could the leaders of those groups come on up, please? Okay. Roxborough Road Elementary School, BPT. Come on up, folks. Show us and tell us how good you've been doing all year long.
Could you use some good news?
Hello, members of the board, Dr. Dice, and our wonderful North Syracuse community. I'm Jackie Grace Mahid, and I'm, this is my president of our BPT at Roxborough Road and also fourth grade. Our BPT and data. Please stand so we can give you accolades. Thank you very much. This year, we actually merged, oh. Wrong one.
Oh, that was another school.
There we go.
Air confusion.
This year, we actually merged our BPT and data team, because of course, we want our data that we have to drive not only our instruction, but other decisions that we're making throughout the school. And so our purpose tonight is to share with you our building goals, as well as our student performance data. We first have our vision statement that I'll ask you to read at your leisure, but we want to make sure that in our building that all of our professionals are focused and united in purpose. So we have our vision statement that we developed last year, and this is what we all stand by and are committed to in terms of working with our students. And we want to make sure that our instruction is engaging instruction. We want to make sure that our students, that we're teaching good character traits, and that we're cultivating wonderful relationships, and that we're using our resources and support services appropriately. So let's begin with our ELA goals. We know that our district goals are that our K-2 students will be reading or should be reading on grade level, and that our third and fourth grade students exceed or meet proficiency. And our building goal is that all of our students from grades kindergarten through fourth grade basically show one year's growth, and that's based upon our pre and post-test outcomes.
Started with kindergarten, and we. Over February and then June. And we chose to track the growth. And in the mid-year.
Okay, and you might ask the question, well, what about students that are at-risk kindergarten students? What are we doing with those students? And so we have to fill in those gaps, and how do we fill in those gaps? In comes our elves, our early literacy volunteers. These wonderful people. We have 10 tutors that come in and meet with our kindergarten students one-to-one. They're tutoring them, they take them out in the hall, and they're basically teaching them their lowercase and uppercase alphabet and their letter sounds. We have about 27 students that are in that program, and the elves, we are totally dedicated to them, because otherwise, our students would not be making the success that we expect them to make. So take a look at our data here, and though it might look as if it's, you know, not significant, it is significant. Our students need to know their letters, and they need to be able to identify letter sounds.
First grade as well as second grade, we were tracked.
And second grade, as you can see in the fall, majority of our students are actually performing below level, and our expectation is by the end of the school year that our students are performing at 28 and above level. And so by April, we're expecting that our students are at a 24, the level 24. But look here in April, when we tested our second grade students, 80 of our students are above grade level. And so we're expecting that 22 that are not quite there, that they will be there by June. So we're very proud of our first and second graders. And take a look at our third graders here. They were given the ELA probably 2009 test in November, and look at them, they're about 73% did pretty well, or passed the test. And then when it was given in the spring, about 87 of the students passed the ELA test. So they actually made significant progress. Okay, our math goal, our district's math goal was that our K-4, all from kindergarten to fourth grade, meet or exceed proficiency levels in mathematics. And our building goal, we also wanted our third and fourth graders to show one year's growth based on pre and post-test outcomes. And so let's take a look at our third grade math results. In the fall, about 52% of our students passed our 2009 math test, and in the spring, about 81% of our students passed our 2010 math test. So significant growth there as well. So we had our ELA before-school tutoring. We call it our early morning crew. And what we did was we gave our third and fourth graders a 2009 ELA test to see where they were, and we examined that part one, and really just zeroed in on what the students' needs were. And as you can see as the listing, all the different skills that our students needed to improve on. And so comprehension certainly was one of the things that we were looking at, test-taking skills, our common core learning standards. We definitely increased their knowledge of informational, or their use of informational text, and we were really training our students to go back into the text and look for information and find evidence. And here's our ELA data. We had 36 third grade students that attended eight sections, and you see that our pre-test had about 64% passing, and then our post-test indicates that 89% were passing. So our students improved 25% over those eight sections. And take a look at our data for fourth grade. We had 24 students that attended our early morning crew with 12 sections total. Our pre-test indicated 55% of our students passing, and our post-test indicated that 76% of our students were passing, and the progress indicates that it was about 21% growth over those sections. And we move on to our character ed program at Roxborough Road. It is a phenomenal program, and we've listed just some of the things that we've been doing. In addition to our fundamental respect, responsibility, caring, and all, we really wanted to hone in on empathy and compassion and caring. So our students really worked with us on collecting things and bringing things in and donating things. So we have the I Can Dance, where we. So, we have the I Can Dance where we collected food, the Bowling for Babies, we collected supplies for Galisona Hospital, Salvation Army, the Food Bank, Hoops for Hounds, all kinds of things that we've been doing so our students can actually also feel that they can give and contribute to others. And our attendance, we really are working very hard to increase our attendance. So, we, of course, our health office is calling homes every day. We send letters to homes for chronic absenteeism. Sometimes, when it gets so bad, we connect with CPS to make sure that parents understand how important education is. And this year, we have an award celebration in which we award students for perfect attendance. So, we think that that would definitely encourage and motivate students to come to school and be prepared to learn.
Just have some pictures here to show you of the first awards assembly that we had. It was held at Roxborough Middle School.
And overall, our ultimate goal is that we want our students to enjoy learning, to be inquisitive learners, to be critical thinkers and problem solvers, and to reach their full potential. We want our students to be productive citizens and to see themselves as contributing not only to their community, but also our global world. And so, we thank you very much for listening to us share our data and what it is that we do at Roxborough Road Elementary School. And I cannot do this without asking all of my Roxborough Road staff to please stand.
How'd you know I had something? I have a few questions, and probably the reading teachers could help me that are in the audience. I see both the reading teachers. How many students receive AIS basically in your building? Approximate number. I can find out on Friday. 200? All right, here's another question. Are the majority of them from primary grades, 1 and 2, or are they from the 3rd and 4th? Or are they about even? Okay, and my other question was to Dawn and the principal. This is a new process that Stan worked on beginning last year. Each building would come in in the fall, which you did, and then come back in the spring and evaluate. I'd like to know how you feel about this process. I've been asking every school. What do you feel about this process?
I like it. And I think I really appreciate that it really helped us. How is it working?
I have a couple of questions too. Can you tell me how you choose, you stated that you look at the data to see where kids are weakest. How do you choose the students who participate in those 12 or 8 sessions in the various grade levels?
The pre-test.
Through the the lowest achieving? And are you finding that the attendance is consistent and that parents are supportive? Fabulous. Great job, Jackie. Really. Thank you, Jackie.
Hey, Bear Road, BPT.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us a few moments of your time tonight to share some of the progress that we've made here at Bear Road this year. One of the things that we started out our school year with was our summer data analysis piece that really highlighted the need for us to focus heavily on one of the common core learning areas, and that is working, having our students work with and become more confident in their abilities to find information and use information in an informational text, in nonfiction information. So, that really set the driving goal for our BPT plan for this current school year. Another thing that really addressing nonfiction text is going to do is to help us to address some of the concerns that are associated with our building's CINE status. So, we really focused heavily on exposing our students to nonfiction text and also giving them skills necessary to handle that text appropriately, to gather the information, make the references to the text in their responses, and also sequencing, finding information, those types of skills. To help us out this year, our building spent a lot of time working at each individual grade level to develop a series of assessments, or an assessment that can be given across grade levels, a common assessment, if you will. And that really helped us to gather the data necessary to monitor our students' progress and to help us to establish some instructional goals. This was a new piece for us at Bear Road this year. So, a lot of the teachers spent a lot of time working on developing these assessments and then gathering the data and using that to make their instructional decisions. At the kindergarten level, we wanted our students to increase their identification of informational texts with prompting and support, to help them to answer questions about key details. And this is the data that we've achieved so far this year. You can see that we've made some tremendous growth. The column, the red columns indicate our fall data that we had gathered, and the blue indicates our spring. And you see a major growth, major jump up, almost doubling the number of students answering a full 5 out of 5 correct in terms of their use of informational text. We made a tremendous amount of growth there. Another piece of data that we do track along at the kindergarten level is our letter naming fluency and our letter sound fluency. And you can see, our morning students are struggling right now with their letter naming and their letter sound fluency, their identifications. What we've done, after looking at this data, what we've been doing throughout the course of the year is we have all of our students working on the aerobics program, which is a web-based program that really focuses on the early phonemic awareness skills that our students have. So, our students spend time each morning working through that program to help build those skills. We are also in the process of having conversations about bringing in the Elves program that Roxborough Road just talked about. I've got something set up for later this week to discuss what the Elves program can offer our students here at Bear Road. So, we recognize an area that we need to address more going forward, and we're taking those steps now to address those concerns. At 1st grade, our students will interpret information presented in a visual, oral, or quantitative format and explain how that information really contributes to their understanding of the text. And if you take a look at some of the data that we've tracked over 1st grade, you can see, we made some pretty good growth in our two most, our two weakest areas in terms of identifying the sequence of the text and then also the cause-and-effect relationships that are found in a text. So, we made some really great growth in the two areas that we were the weakest in. If you look at some of the data, though, you see the blue marks for the fall and some of the red marks for our late-winter benchmark, our late-winter assessment. And really, after going back and looking at it, what we attribute that to is our initial benchmark document, our passage that the students worked through and read through and worked through was, basically was too simple. It was too easy. It was, the kids were able to ace it right from the very beginning. Now, I mentioned earlier that this was our first attempt at developing this sort of a common assessment so that we could have it across, all teachers give it across, the grade levels. So, you know, after looking at the data, we realized that we've got to modify this and tweak it going forward for next year. So, that's something else that we're going to take a look at in terms of the documents, the passages that we use to gather our data. In 1st grade, 81% of our students are reading at a DRA level of 10 or above. And the goal, as you saw earlier, is to have students reading up to a level 18 by the end of June. So, we're well on our way to meeting that goal. And 21% of our students in 1st grade have received or are in the process of receiving AIS services. So, again, the ones that we've identified as struggling and needing those interventions, we're trying to support them as much as we possibly can throughout the course of their school day with us. In 2nd grade, 2nd grade students will be able to ask and answer questions using the six major questions, who, what, when, where, why, and how, to help demonstrate their understanding of ideas in a piece of informational text. And if you take a look at the first slide here, talking about the students that needed or required strategic intervention, those are the students who struggled the most in terms of the skills that you see here, word knowledge, phonics, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. The numbers in the fall, pretty high, close to 40, almost 45%. But the second time we gave the assessment, after working with those students, we've identified the need. We spent the time working in small groups, providing some pretty focused and comprehensive instruction. You can see that number has dropped now to less than 10. So, we made some tremendous progress there. And the students working on grade level, although that number has dropped, that isn't necessarily a bad thing. When you look at the number of students now achieving and scoring in the above-average range, it's gone through the roof. It's skyrocketing. So, we've taken our most needy kids, and we've moved them along to either on-level or even in some cases, above-level. So, we're making some tremendous progress along the course of our 2nd grade, our work with our students in 2nd grade. In 2nd grade, 75% of our students are reading at a DRA level of 24 or above. And as you heard earlier, the goal was for them to be at level 28 by the time the end of the school year rolls around, in the end of June. So, again, we're well on our way of meeting that goal. 20% of our students, 2nd grade students, are receiving or have already received some AIS services to help them meet those goals. So, again, we've identified the needs, and we're trying to channel the resources that we have available to help the kids to be as successful as they possibly can be. And our learning objective at 3rd grade, again, dealing with our informational text, to help them to use the skills of drawing conclusion, identifying main idea in details, and also sequencing. And at the 3rd grade level, you see some good solid incremental growth in those three areas of drawing conclusions, finding main ideas in details, and also finding sequences. So, we're making the incremental growth necessary. One area that we're going to focus on in the future is drawing conclusions. Although we're making progress, it's still not, the numbers aren't necessarily where they need to be. So, that's one area that, using this data now that we can say across grade level, this is something that we're going to focus on and work towards addressing in the future. And the 3rd grade students will be taking a follow-up assessment, their kind of post-assessment, end-of-the-year assessment coming up. So, we're going to do the kind of the three-assessment phase, the initial piece, getting our baseline data, do a mid-year progress point, and then do kind of a post-test coming up. So, that'll be coming up for our kids shortly. In 4th grade, our students are going to increase their exposure to nonfictional text, and they're going to be able to interpret information from the text in which it appears. And all of our 4th grade teachers this year use the Ames Web program. And that's a program that is a nationwide program. It is norm, has national norms, numbers to it. The numbers in blue you see are the numbers, the national norm numbers provided by Ames Web. And you see, in the fall, in terms of reading fluency, our 4th grade students were pretty close to the national average in terms of the number of words read per minute, right around 100, a little over 100. We were just a shade below the national average. But after working with our teachers, with come the winter benchmark on Ames Web, you can see now, we've not only caught up, but we've also surpassed the national norm for reading fluency. And the program, the Ames Web program, tracked our data in terms of our students improving at a rate of 1.3 words read per week during the course of their time together. And Ames Web also allows us to track reading comprehension. And our reading comprehension, again, you can see in the fall, we did quite well. Our numbers far surpassed the national average. And our progress has continued, maybe not necessarily at the same rate, but we're still exceeding the national average in terms of our students and their reading comprehension. And just like the rest of our students, again, we identify those who use this information to identify the students who need the greatest level of supports. And we, again, channel our resources, provide our AIS services to meet those needs. And our students will be taking a, again, their follow-up piece, their post-assessment piece coming up later this month, so that we can get that final piece of data, so that we can use, really take a reflective look at our instructional program, take a look at, you know, celebrate the successes. A lot of what this data piece will allow us to do is really recognize, you know, these are the things that we're doing that are really great in helping our students to achieve a great deal of success. And it also allows us to identify areas that we can tweak in and work on over the summer and help our students out even more with. So, overall, our BPT, our data team, John Wojcik is here with me. He's the co-chair of our building BPT team. Other members of our BPT team and the Bear Road staff are here with me tonight. It's been a great team approach to what we've accomplished so far this year at Bear Road. We've really branched into a different direction in terms of using the data, like I had mentioned earlier. Something, developing these assessments was a big step for our staff, and they embraced it and they handled it. You know, it develops some good data gathering tools. And it's only going to help us in the future to service our kids and meet their needs even better. For a few moments of your time tonight to share some of the great things that we have been doing so far. Yes?
Track the relationship between the growth and fluency comprehension.
To track the relationship with it. Ames Web provides us with, John's really our expert in terms of Ames Web here at the building, but it gives us a variety of ways to track and plot the data. We can do it in a variety of different ways. Jump in here, John. You're the expert.
Yeah, Ames Web gives us many different graphs. That was just our grade-level graph. You can go on there and click Individual Home Rooms, Individual Teachers, and you can even do side-by-side comparisons, all three. A nice function Ames Web that we'll probably use at the end of the year. And we, as we've done it more at a 4th grade, grade-level meetings, we've looked at the graphs, and it's a triangle graph. And it shows your strategic, your on-level, and your above-level students. And we saw in the beginning, the top of the triangle, the red, had a lot more than we wanted. And then, when we did it again in the winter, in January, we came back as a grade level and we looked at it. And this takes the whole piece, reading and comprehension. And our red shrunk, our yellow, which is the on-level, got bigger, and so did our green. So, at the grade level, we're having those discussions, we're tracking, and Ames Web shows us the graphs for them. That helps us say, and the best part was using this data this year at 4th grade, we kind of all said, what can we do together that's going to help these kids? Because we saw that what's happening in one classroom is happening in another. So, we're, we as teachers, this data kind of brought us together this year and really focused our efforts on, here are the gaps, what can we, six of us, do to fill them? That's, Ames Web was a great tool for us this year.
The conversations that have been generated around this process have been invaluable to not just 4th grade, but to the building in general. It's amazing, the rich conversations that focus on student achievement and instructional process that have come forward as a result. And it's really exciting and energizing. That's, you know, that's why we all got into this in the first place, and to have a tool to help, a vehicle to make that happen is really exciting to see. Exactly, yeah, it rallies us around that common theme.
I'm going to ask you the same question I ask every school. Matt, you're new to the district, so this process is new to you, and I would like to know your comments on this process that we've started, where you come in the fall, tell us your goals, your objectives, your strategies, and then come back in the spring and with a little valuation.
Sure. I think overall, the process is phenomenal. I think the benefits within the building itself, as I just kind of talked about a little bit, a little bit ago, are incredible. The rich conversations that we have, the valuable talks and team cohesiveness, and also building purpose and focus is beyond, it's beyond description. It helps to unite us in a common focus and purpose. The opportunity to come and share our progress here with The opportunity to come and share, uh, our pro- progress here with the Board of Education is also very good. Um, it, it's a valuable process in the sense that it allows us to, um, identify and kind of give ourselves a little, I don't want to say pat on the back, but i- in a way it does. It allows us to highlight some of the good things that, that happen. Um, you know, the school year's, it's, it's a long school year, and, you know, it's important to celebrate the successes, even, even the little ones. And this is an opportunity for us to, to celebrate those successes, but also talk about the areas that we, we have identified in terms of how we can support our kids even better. So I think the process in general, I think it, it's wonderful. I, I love the conversation, and I love the opportunity to, to, to discuss it and share it. I think it's great.
The other thing, and I know the board is aware of it, but they have the morning program at Bear Road every single day, and, uh, I was fortunate to be over there. I know Mr. Sabota's there every day with his young children, uh, but Mr. Keegan was there-
Yes.
-with me, and he just, uh, was amazed at what happens at your school. Every single morning, that staff and those students meet-
It is incredible.
...for twenty, twenty-five minutes, and that's where your team building is.
Mm-hmm.
But also, Matt, I got to compliment you. You're new to our district, you walked in the first day of the school, I remember Smith's speech, we got, hired you. You walked in on that first day, you've done, in my opinion, a marvelous job, and you, as a leader, have brought that school together. I know they do a lot of the work, they're great workers there.
They do, they're phenomenal.
They are awesome workers. But a leader helps bring that out in people, and you've done, uh, you've not even been there seven, eight months, and you've done a great job. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I've enjoyed every minute of my time, and thank you.
Can I, can I also reiterate what, um, Bob is saying, that, um, so I enjoy spending my days in schools and getting the opportunity to, um, visit classrooms and talk with students. And I was sitting here thinking about, you know, when we first hired you, Matt, and the fact that you, um, hit the ground running, and, um, you jumped right in, and every time I walk into that building, you've got a smile on your face. Uh, we chuckle about a couple of things, um, and, you know, every part of what's going on in that building. And so that truly is a testament to your leadership. And the last time I was there, we were talking about, you know, how things have been going, and what are the things you see for the future, and, uh, just your staff. And for the staff that's in the, um, room, I want you to know that he thinks so highly of each and every one of you, and he continuously talks about how, how hard you work and how committed you are to our students. And let us not, um, also forget that I know that, uh, that resonates across our district. Having said that, the fact that you're a newbie, um, but you came in and you, um, you know, you're doing your thing, uh, we're just really excited to have you, and we're excited that we were able to nab you as we did when we did, so keep up the great work.
Thank you, I'm very happy here. Couldn't be happier. Thank you very much.
This was, was this your first one? Is this your first, um, BPT one?
We did one in, in the fall.
Second.
Yes.
Second. Okay, uh, we have some comments from the audience. Um, I would ask that you keep them, uh, to as close to as three minutes as you can. Jacob Worksman?
Well, first off, I'd like to, uh, apologize for not shaking all of your hands, it's quite a bit of you, that'd be time-consuming.
Let's get started.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'd like, I'd, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come and speak tonight, especially during this hectic time of the year. My name is Jacob Worksman, and I am currently a senior at the high school here at CNS and alumni of the football program. Last August, I approached you and, um, with several concerns about the football program. Like I stated in August, and I'll state again tonight, I don't think the nine out of the ten losing seasons the current leadership has had this last decade is the biggest problem. I am a firm believer and have clearly been proven right again this last season that the integrity of the varsity head coach, and therefore the program, is at a shameful level. Other schools' programs show and teach life lessons, core values, respect, discipline, and the list goes on. Our football program, however, teaches that it is okay to slack off, to not be dedicated to something, to not have respect for ourselves and others. And there is no punishment, and, and then there's no punishment for doing drugs and alcohol, uh, during the season and in general as an adolescent teenager. These simple life lessons could have benefited close to eight-hundred student athletes in the last decade. These, these lessons have simply been thrown out the window. This upsets me as an alumni, as a student, and simply as a person, and it's simply too late to reverse the past. But we can surely fix and make it a better future. And like I once said, Mr. Tom Tatham knew exactly what needed to be done in order to fix the program. And now it's coming from the athletes as well. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, and I say this with the utmost respect, heads were turned, letters were not read, and the community was not heard. The community was and has been ignored. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I think it's time you hear from the current players of the North Stars football team and hear their voice. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I'd like to leave you with all but two words: moral fiber. Thank you.
Are you Joe Bianchi?
Yes.
You're up.
Hello, my name is Joseph Bianchi, and I've been playing football since third grade. I've been playing for the school level since seventh grade and continue to. This year, I will become, be a returning varsity senior player.
Tyler Hemingway, and I'm a third-year. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would first like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Here in my hand, I have a petition that was signed by thirty current players of the varsity football team, three players in whom are on the lower-level football teams, and three players who have stopped playing football due to the current leadership, totaling thirty-six current student athletes. Like I said, thirty of which who are on the varsity football team, and eighteen of us are seniors this upcoming season. If you see the attendance of the community members this evening, the majority of them are in support of our cause. The younger gentlemen behind me are those voices. I am representing the varsity football team. We are a team, and therefore, as a team, we have signed this position, petition. The petition states, "For whom it may concern, I whom which have, has signed this here petition am saying that I will no longer be involved in the CNS football program if under the leadership of Stephen Ellis. I will not participate in this upcoming varsity football season to boycott the current leadership of the team, Stephen Ellis. I will and only will return to play football this upcoming year if there is a new leadership established. The integrity of the program is restored, and Stephen Ellis is removed as varsity head Ladies and gentlemen of the board, this petition was signed with our own will. All of us who have signed it knew exactly why we signed it and for what reason we signed it. No outside forces or individuals have constructed our views or made us think in a biased way. Our thoughts on the leadership that is currently established is due to continuous losing seasons, playing under the current leadership, but most of all, the extreme loss of integrity throughout the program as a whole. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we want change. Once again, thank you very much for allowing me to speak with the approval and on behalf of all the players behind me.
Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, um, this is Just Cause. Thank you.
Come on up, Phil.
Thanks for letting me come up and talk. Um, my name's Phil Clery, I'm a district resident, um, graduate and teacher, and, uh, I'm here with some, some good news. Um, you know, as we've heard, and we all know, uh, there are a lot of tough times in public schools throughout New York State, from pre-K to post-graduate. Uh, the programs that we need for our students are at risk. And you all know that the state has fallen short, has not kept their promise of funding the programs that our students need, keeping our schools strong, giving our kids lots of choices. Um, this district, this district has worked particularly hard to maintain programs, and again, to provide choices for our students. But we know going into this budget year and looking over the horizon that that may become worse if we don't do something. So my, my purpose for talking tonight is twofold. One is to remind people to educate themselves, register to vote, and get out and vote in support of our school budget on Tuesday, May fifteenth. But in the meantime, there's something else we can all do, regardless of our age, um, because we know from the meetings we've had at the junior high where the seats have been filled with wonderful students, uh, residents of our community, who see a problem, who see a need, and are called to action. I, I know from my life in this community, um, to see that level of activism from our students is just breathtaking. And if we don't do something to encourage and harness and guide them, we are, we are really not doing our jobs. So this Friday, May eleventh, downtown Syracuse, in front of the Hughes State Office Building on Washington Street at five PM, there will be a large rally. The rally is organized by teachers, but all are welcome. We encourage students to come, to bring their families, their parents, little brothers and sisters. We, of course, will have teachers there, school board members from around the area, school administrators, local legislators, and community leaders. We're coming together on that day to say that the state has not provided the means that we need to do our jobs, that they are not giving a sound, basic education to our students, that they are laying the responsibilities on local boards of education, that they are not bringing the revenues in an equitable manner to our schools. And on that day, we want everybody to come together, have a good time, listen to a few speeches, and to show our community and the state that we need those funds to keep our schools strong. So I'm asking all of you to please join with us at NSCA to bring your families and your children, and to encourage our students to come and rally with us on Friday, May eleventh, at five o'clock. And also, I know there are a lot of nice people behind me. We have a lot of great students that are here from the Math Honor Society with Ms. Owens and Ms. Frelletti. We have a lot of great football players. Uh, I know Mr. Gates and Mr. Banks are back there, people who are in leadership positions with our students, to encourage them to get out and talk to their, their neighbors and friends, and stand with us on, uh, this Friday at the rally, and to come out and rally people to get out and vote yes for the budget on Tuesday, May fifteenth. So if you have any questions, or if any of the students need materials to make signs or, uh, use social networking, they can contact me at NSCA, certainly our president, John Carril at NSCA, um, and any of our, uh, great teachers, or booster club leaders, or coaches. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Yes, I'm back. Uh, I first, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank, um, our teachers and their union for really stepping up with this budget and meeting it head-on. Um, there was, there was, uh, it was very well-received by the community. Um, myself being a union member, you know, um, that takes a lot. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you, the board, and the superintendent for all your hard work on this budget. Understandably, it's the hardest part of your job. Thank yous are few and far between, so from myself, I just want to thank you for, for all your, your hard work. Let me refresh everybody's memory why I'm here. I, along with a growing group of players, students, teachers, alumni, booster supporters, feel that our varsity program needs a change. I was challenged on the facts I presented when I said we've only had one winning season in ten years. At the following meeting, I presented to the board and superintendent the facts as section three sees them, not as somebody has told you or what somebody has posted on the CNS website. And the facts remain the same, our varsity football program is a failure. It's a disgrace, and for our players, it's an embarrassment. That's the reality of the situation. Someone once told me one time, perception is reality. And the perception that we have is that the board and the superintendent don't care about our football program or its athletes. That's the perception we have after hearing President Carbone say, "You've made your decision, and it's not open for discussion." Listen, we as parents all know what happened when the attempt was made to remove the head coach. We know about the lawyers, how they got involved with the union, we know how the union backed the coach, we know, as they should, but we also know how the coach stuck it to the union by removing an assistant and hiring somebody out of district. We all know how our booster president sent a letter to the board chastising our winning JV staff, and myself for that matter. The point here is, is we all know about what has happened. We all know why the board has taken over the review of the head varsity coach and not the athletic director, like every other school district does in this area. So having said that, perception is reality. So let's talk about just cause, as written in the teacher's contract in section eight-point-eight. The failing performance of our football program is equivalent to that of that hypothetical Regents Chemistry teacher who only passes ten to thirty percent of their students each year. We are talking about a failing program. Whether it's football or chemistry, there is just cause. That isn't just my opinion, it's also that of two local union leaders, their union lawyers, local athletic directors, and all the coaches, or I shouldn't say all, most of the coaches in section three. I would love to debate anybody on this board or on the coaching staff and how a failing program benefits our students. If that falls under section eight-point-four of our contract, I would love to be the voice of the people for that. In closing, the superintendent, and at least I know Connie, has read many of the letters from the parents like myself. I say Connie because I know, like I've said before, that I know the board has not read all the letters. That's an admission from somebody on your board of director, or Board of Education. But we are just the parents. Does the board know that the players have met with the superintendent a couple weeks ago? Was that ever passed down to the board? I'm asking. Okay.
It was.
It's been said that the superintendent and the board want to hear from the kids. You know the players are afraid to speak up. They know of the retaliations that will happen by cutting their playing time, or from the team for that matter. He received a nice letter these past couple days from a kid who has cut his senior year, retaliation. These players have been speaking up. In years past, the weight room would be packed with players this time of year. Strength and conditioning for football really never stops, but typically kicks into high gear in April. How are the players speaking? Go to the weight room now. Other than the four or five kids that are always there, there certainly isn't any team building going on. Maybe that's because the strength and conditioning coach, who the kids respected and liked, also walked away from the program and replaced with someone who calls the kids weak and can't even shake their hands. Our kids are going to get hurt. Our kids are going to get hurt, and that is on your shoulders. That's a fact. So with someone on this board and the superintendent said they wanted to hear from the kids, you've heard from the kids, you have a petition in your hands, you have your documentation, you have your letters, you've heard from us parents, we're asking you to make the right decision. Thank you.
Phil pretty much covered it. I was going to know about the rally on Friday, and Phil did that one more eloquently than I could. Also, it's our understanding that there's been a spontaneous, uh, effort on the part of the, uh, kids at the high school to hold a, a rally in support of the budget. Great if we could get out and support the kids in that effort as well, and get out and vote, please.
My question is, uh, strategic plan, will there be a paper copy given to us soon?
My question is, strategic plan, will there be a paper copy given to us soon?
As indicated in the email that I sent to you in Friday's board packet, it was reiterated once again there as well as in executive session, that once the strategic plan is finalized and it is presented, the board will receive a copy. Do you have any other questions? Thank you.
We'll take the kids'--
I had some comments.
Go ahead, you didn't raise your hand, Bob.
Well, you said reports, and I didn't have a report. Celebration in our district. One of our students this weekend, eighth grader, I believe, from the junior high, won the New York, New England Optimist Club Oratorical Contest, and he will be receiving a scholarship, Danny Harbaugh, of $2,500. And we are fortunate that he will be here on the night of May 21st and will present his winning speech. Our school district has had two winners, and this goes all the way, Pat, from Portland, Oregon, all the way to Jamestown, New York. That is quite an achievement by our Optimist Club and by the school district. I was fortunate to go to the very last choral concert at CNS. Every time I go to a concert at the high school, it's just amazing what those people do in the music department. This year's theme was celebrating world cultures, and they also included Roxboro Road Middle School students. So they had students from fifth, sixth, seventh grade, and 10 through 12. Just amazing. Again, I know I embarrassed him, he's not here tonight. CJ wrote a piece. He composed a piece that was sung by over 300 students. That's amazing at our high school. And the other thing, it deals with sports. We have a former athlete that is now pitching for the Arizona Diamondbacks. He pitched his first game in Miami and did a great job. Unfortunately, this weekend, he went against the Mets and about, against, but that is an awesome feat. And the last thing is a little publicity for Dallas for Scholars. I know Mr. Carbone will be participating. Each of you received a flyer on our golf tournament. Audience, there's some back there. Each recipient or each person that will be participating will receive this wonderful cooler. And again, this goes to our students. Could I have some students stand up that are going to get Dallas for Scholars scholarships? Are any students there going to get them? Here are some of our students that are going to be receiving. And I know Dr. Deish, you're going to speak. Mr. Carbone, you're going to speak on June 6th. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All the participation in government students come out, we'll sign your petitions.
Fish and fish.
Come on up here, anybody.
Anybody at the table.
Ryan, you better come.
I didn't realize you were in our school.
Oh, God. You, you're a senior.
We know that the ball is the 1940 golf.
Well, you kind of fell off the face of the earth, you didn't see on field.
He signed up, he wants to golf. Did you golf with Mr. Carbone last year?
I make sure you trace that, that's not where it was.
Yep, yep.
What is it? Look up there on the block out there.
You know, until T Office until 1:30.
Office, yeah. We're not, so you have to take that off.
I'm just signing that. Okay.
In fact, you know what, maybe the agenda says. You got an agenda? There's none back there? Just so you know, what's the name of this place? It's the administration building.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for telling me.
Get down North Syracuse Junior High School.
Trust me, it's the JFMAO.
JFMAO?
Taking a break?
Yeah, let's take a couple of minutes.
You always got that excuse, boy.
Who's the one of the board members that are running? Marley? What's Finney doing here? Bob? I'm sorry, I wished I'd helped you. It's inexcusable. Keep thinking that you did something.
Muted.
I hope you do. I'm weighted with fading broch here. Bye, kids. Bye-bye. Okay, you know what you're on? Oh, you're in private.
I am now. I was in public, but I don't know how I got there. Then I re-logged in and I came in.
Yeah, you got to log in every time. Did you know that? Probably do.
Yeah.
Okay. Right there.
Roxboro.
Okay. Want to go back to that? Here's the minutes right here. See it?
Yeah.
Slow, slow. Yeah, it's slow.
Yeah.
Get the heck out of there.
Apparently I did.
You guys got to get holders. Come on. Go to, go to--
The Dallas for Scholars.
I went to Under Five, but you know, you ain't got time for that stuff. This was 2250 plus. But it's on, they're online for cheaper than that, 19 bucks.
I've never, I just thought about it and then I remembered it again when I come here.
Online order, no.
Yeah.
I'll let him not to talk to you about that, but--
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, no, I'll get--
Thank you, I was thinking about you last--
Yeah, because he actually--
All right, well, don't--
It is. Nobody's dealing with it. Now let me tell you. Soccer program is going through the same thing.
Is it really?
Mm-hmm. You don't see it coming over here, do you?
No.
Just take the mistake and care of it.
And the kids' office, who's taking care of it?
Yeah, take, take them, take care of it.
And he's sat down with me--
Because he doesn't care what happens to Steve.
And taken it--
Goes right through the friggin' rain.
I'll forward you his information. 79 number--
You leaving? Excuse me? Nice. Think if it was you? God forbid it was you, there would be no compassion. Got to understand that. We want a nurse to keep her ears. What? These are two guys around? Ah. One is he, number three or four?
I think it's three or four since--
We're out. Huh? Which one are you?
I don't know, Dan Fray.
Which number is it? How would I know?
Number four, four. Number four. We go by numbers like prisoners. Number four, he's a good boy.
And your kid is where?
He's a good boy. Hey, are we ready?
Kindergarten. My wife teaches second grade. Yes, my mother knows your wife.
We're going to be our own grandmothers here pretty quick. Good luck, young man.
Routine action items. Any questions or discussion? No? Motion to take them as a group, Michael and Sandy. Recommended action is to approve A, B, and C as submitted. All in favor? And, like it that way. Okay, request to abolish and create instructional and civil service positions. Ms. Beach, would you--
Sure. This is a follow--
One second. Mr. Crabtree, we took them as a group, routine action items. You okay?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
No, it's my fault.
No, it's not your fault, it's mine.
Okay, the recommendation to abolish and create positions, this is a follow-up to all of the discussions that went into the adopted budget. And so we need to have the board adopt a resolution that goes through every tenure area and what the increases, decreases are. So all of that is spelled out, both for instructional and support staff.
Questions on that at all?
God forbid the budget should go down. Oh, excuse me. God forbid the budget goes down next week. This means there'll be more cuts, is that correct?
Well, my understanding is if the budget goes down, then we will need to go back and the board will need to reanalyze that. And if we need to cut more positions, then we would have to do another resolution with any additional cuts that--
But you want things fast tonight.
Yes, actually Connie and I talked about that, and we thought it was best to keep the first group intact.
I would say what would happen, Kay, is--
We'll go home.
That we'll come back to the table and figure out what we would go out with for a second time. I'm hoping that we don't have to do that.
I'm hoping so too. I'm just wondering why we're doing this before the budget--
Anyone else? Recommended action is to approve that resolution as submitted. Pat, second, Bob, all in favor? That's your name, Sol Sol. Pointment of registrars and poll workers for May 15th. Any questions on those? Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. So no questions, no discussion? Recommended action is to appoint the above-listed individuals as election volunteer workers and authorize the district clerk to appoint such other individuals as may be needed for the annual budget vote on May 17th, 2000. Second, Michael, all in favor? Ms. Beach, letters of reasonable assurance, would you just go through that as you do every year?
Sure. Every year, the first board meeting in May, we ask the board to approve the letters of reasonable assurance that will go out to all 10-month employees on June 1st. And this will be all 10-month employees that are reasonably assured, the same amount and type of work next school year as they had this year. So obviously, those people who are having their positions cut would not be receiving one of them because they would be entitled to unemployment.
Questions? Question? Action is to approve the resolution as submitted. Dot, second, Sandy, all in favor? Also, acknowledgement of gift. It's virtually impossible for us to do what we do, especially with the constant and ever-increasing financial challenges. So we give awards and gifts that the people of our community and the business of gift to us. Linda Tate was awarded a $200 credit towards McDonald Publishing Company products. So the recommended action is to accept with gratitude the gift of $200 worth of McDonald products from McDonald Publishing Company Classroom Makeover. Motion, Sandy, second, Tony, all in favor? Also, item E, F are policy items. You are busy again in the policy committee, I can see. Are there any questions or are there any discussions relative to any of those items? Action to take the item E and F as a group. Bob, second, Pat. Recommended action is to send policy 4510.1 for a second reading. Deduct policies 8101, 9110, 9280, 90 and 9390, 9590, and 9100. All in favor?
Can I just say a little something? I would just like to say that I have chaired the committee for the past couple of years, and it has definitely been my pleasure to do so. They have worked exceptionally hard. They generate some really great conversation, but they seem to have really put their noses to the grindstone this year, and we are right where we should be as far as making sure we're on task and getting things done the way they need to be done. So I want to send a heartfelt thank you to that committee because they really have gotten themselves right on schedule to where they should be. And it's a lot, it's a lot. This is not an easy committee, so they have worked very well together and respected each other.
Thank you. Need a motion, or do we need an executive session before we take personnel items A and B?
May I read positions? Can I say that here?
Any problems with A and B?
I'm having a problem with B.
Yeah, sure. I mean, you, I saw an email today. Is that answered?
So I can do it out here, it's not a problem.
Can we?
Well, if she, if it's about an individual, then I believe we would need to go in executive session, but if there's a question about the type of positions and why they're on there, I think that's okay.
What the type of positions are and why they're on there, is that? Or is it about specific individuals?
No, it said--
It's not about individuals, specific people?
Okay. Well, it was said in that letter someplace, I read it, that it was-- Find the word I'm looking for. When you sign something outside of a contract--
A memorandum of understanding.
Yes. I have never seen a memorandum of understanding being even talked about, us knowing about it first, and I never did this before, unless I wasn't listening, and then I apologize.
Memorandum of understanding was included in last Friday's letter, in the Friday letter, and--
Okay, that's where I read it.
--the contract language was amended, making it more affordable actually for catering services to be used.
Talked about catering positions prior to the Friday letter, though.
I never heard it. First time I heard it.
We had talked about looking at food service to see how we could make it more profitable or cost-effective because of the deficit. And we don't get a lot of within-district catering because even when I looked into it for the reception we held when Dr. Melvin left us, it really was very expensive. And a lot of times, they went outside the catering, outside the district to get catering because of that, because it was so high, so--
But we've had discussions about this.
Yeah, no.
I'd also like to add, if the question is about a memorandum of understanding being developed, unlike when a contract is ratified, if a contract's ratified, it needs to be voted on by the board. A memorandum of understanding can alter or adjust a portion of the contract through the signature of the superintendent and the unit president.
And then it's put before us rubber-stamped, is that correct?
There is no board approval on memorandums of understanding.
Oh, this all involved. Did we not just get a new food service person or person? I don't even know who it is, man or woman. Yes or no? When does this person start?
We've not finalized our arrangements with BOSI's, but we're going to use a new food service co-sir through BOSI's that will involve a new manager provided by BOSI's, a woman by the name of Wendy Swift. And she wouldn't start with us until July-- And she wouldn't start with us until July 1st, until after Louise's finished up.
And is this not something that this should have been put through them first before we did something like this, seeing as how it's going to be under new?
Well, we talked, actually, what we did was we've invited Wendy to our meetings, and so she has kind of had an opportunity to meet with the cook managers and Louise, and, and so she's, she's familiar with this concept and the notion of basically having people work for a lower rate, so that, that's really what it's all about, is, is asking the food service workers to work at a lower rate to make catering services, kind of like they do for athletic events when we do, what's that position called?
Concessions.
The concession stand. It's mirrored after the concession stand agreement. And it should allow us to utilize our own employees to cater events here in the district.
So the people, you're telling me the people who work in the concession stands are paid a lesser amount of money than they are normally?
Yep, that's how it works. You kind of bid for it. When we have an event, it's thrown out there and people get to come and say, yes, I'll work that event at this rate. And it basically.
Could we have, could we have some explanation on that next letter?
Oh, sure. Sure.
And what else can I tell you? I can't support this. I just want you to know that, and I just can't deal with it, so.
I have a few questions. I saw it for the first time on the Friday letter, so I guess I'm asking the executive board, you meet ahead of time, was this presented?
No, absolutely not.
And I agree with Sandy and Tony that we did talk about, you know, these kinds of things, but I don't remember specifically, and I could not, might not have listened, I don't listen well sometimes, but I, with.
I didn't hear it.
With Kay, I wish we had had this, I'm supporting it because it's a great plan, but I wish I had known a little sooner.
First time we heard about this, my knowledge was in the Friday letter.
If you'd like us to pull it so that we can have further conversation.
No, he's gonna support it.
But just in case others want to have questions or ask questions, you know, meaning outside, or more specific questions, you know, we can do that.
Can I just add something?
More specific questions. Are they going to be using government food for this catering thing that they're going to be using?
No, that's kind of the need.
Whatever they are using for, for the kids.
No, Kay's actually asking a good, a good question.
Oh, why, and that's not a good question. It's, because if you die, you might as well don't do it.
We're gonna just use, what happens is if, say you wanted us to cater an event, you don't even have to use our menu. You would just say, here's what we want to serve, and then what we would do is our food service folks would go out and procure that food, and we would, we would put, tell you what that would cost. And all this MOU does is give us a lower cost of labor so that we can serve the food that you wanted at a, at a more affordable rate. And it doesn't guarantee that all the events are going to be done in-house, but it'll help us leverage our organization more effectively.
One of the things that one other district does, they even establish. They, you know, they look at things that they can do cost-effectively, and, you know, if, if, say, for instance, the basketball team wanted to have the banquet in-house, they would be presented just the way they would if they went to an. Their catering plate. With several alternatives that they.
Well, it's like the, it's like the legislative breakfast when they had it here. I'm sure that, that we would, we would benefit and the organization would benefit by a catered, a breakfast catered.
Yeah, but to Kay's point, to put her at ease, we wouldn't use government food.
Well, I don't want to say it because it's, we're on the air debute, but I'm going to tell you, we've done this once or twice before, and we had to ask what we were eating because we had no clue. I mean, this is.
So, so if that.
But I'll get you some more facts and put it in the.
But I do think that if that was the case, that's because there really was not the kind of oversight and supervision that really needed to be in place to ensure that when something was put before individuals to eat, it wasn't a big question of what were you going to be eating. And so whether it be, you know, the legislative breakfast or the honor roll breakfast for the kids, you know, things like that, there are other districts who do where it just affords the district the opportunity to use, to use in-house, in a sense, for these expenses, as well as, who knows? This could be a culinary program in the making, you know, as the years roll by, and if we really see that kids are getting, that we can connect kids to this kind of, you know, component with great interest. I know other districts have culinary programs that are extremely, extremely successful, and the districts actually use that specific program for all of their district events. And you would be amazed at some of the things that those kids can, you know, can cook.
We have it at BOSI's every year.
Right, right.
I would have seven out of the nine kids were our students.
I couldn't believe it, I was, oh my God.
You know, and going on to culinary school.
All of them getting scholarships is just amazing. Yeah, you're right.
Are there any, your questions?
I still have a vote no, that's okay. Only because of the way it was presented, otherwise I'd be fine, I'm fine.
All right, all right, so we have a motion on the table to take them as a group. Do we have that?
So I have to, you mean both A and B, I'll have to vote?
Oh, no, that's, sorry about that.
Come on.
That's okay. Before we vote on the two items, I'd like to recognize Linda Vitello, an elementary school teacher at KWS Bear Road Elementary School who retires with 21 years of service to the district. I wish to congratulate Linda and wish her well. Hey, the recommended action for instructional personnel A is to approve personnel, personnel A as submitted. Motion. Tony, second Michael, all in favor? That's support staff personnel report B is to acknowledge B as submitted. Motion. That, second Sandy, all in favor?
Connie, would you make sure it's, I'm opposed because of the catering, nothing else, but that's, that's the reason I'm voting no.
Hey, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with two district bargaining units and to review the employment record of four individuals with action to follow on one employment matter. Second Tony, all in favor?